Karen.
Here's Karen.
Oh, here she is.
Excellent.
Yeah, she's here. Okay, Mr. Marshall, you are the co-host of this meeting. You have a quorum of your board. I have 6:33. We're recording. Amherst Media is with us in the house. Nate Malloy is with us tonight. I think we're good to go.
All right. Thank you, Pam.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Amherst Planning Board Meeting of June 18th, 2025. My name is Doug Marshall and is Chair of the Amherst Planning Board. I am calling this meeting to order at 6:31 PM. This meeting is being recorded and is available live stream via Amherst Media. Minutes are being taken. Pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, and further extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2025, this Planning Board meeting will be conducted via remote means using the Zoom platform. Zoom meeting link is available on the meeting agenda posted on the Town website's calendar listing for this meeting, or go to the Planning Board webpage and click on the most recent agenda where the Zoom link is listed at the top of the page. No in-person attendance of the public is permitted. However, every effort will be made to ensure the public can access the meeting in real time via technological means. In the event, public access is disrupted for reasons of economic hardship, or despite best efforts, we will post an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's website. Board members, I will take a roll call. When I call your name, unmute yourself, answer affirmatively, and return to mute. Bruce Coleman.
I am here.
Brad Artwell.
I am here.
Jesse Major.
Present.
I, Doug Marshall, am present. Johanna Newman.
Present.
And Karen Winter.
Present.
Thank you all. Board members, if technical issues arise and the discussion needs to pause, it will be noted in the minutes. Please use the raise hand function to ask a question or make a comment, and I will call on you to speak. After speaking, remember to remute yourself. To the general public, the general public comment item is reserved for public comment regarding items not appearing later on tonight's agenda. Please be aware, the board will not respond to comments during general public comment period. A book comment may also be heard at other times during the meeting when deemed appropriate by the Planning Board Chair. Please indicate you wish to make a comment by clicking the raise hand button when public comment is solicited. If you have joined the Zoom meeting using a telephone, please indicate you wish to make a comment by pressing star nine on your phone. When called up, please identify yourself by stating your full name and address and put yourself back into mute when finished speaking. Residents can typically express their views for up to three minutes or at the discretion of the Planning Board Chair. If a speaker does not comply with these guidelines or exceeds their allotted time, their participation may be disconnected from the meeting. All right, I have 6:34 and we'll start off with our review and approval of minutes. We had the April 2nd minutes from this year, drafts in our packet for preparation for the meeting. Does anyone have any comments on the minutes as drafted by our hardworking staff? No comments. Okay. Johanna.
My comment is that I think the minutes look thorough and complete, and I didn't see any errors, and unless anyone objects, I'd move to approve the minutes.
All right. We have a motion on the table. Bruce?
Second.
All right, thank you. Any further comments from board members? All right, well, we'll just do the usual roll call, starting off with you, Bruce.
Bye.
And Fred.
Hi.
And Jesse.
I am.
And Johanna.
I.
Karen.
I.
And I as well. That's six in favor. No abstentions, no absences. Great, the motion passes. All right, so we'll go on to public comment period. Yeah, let's see if we have more. Attendees are. All right, so members of the public, this is the time to raise your virtual hands to let me know if you want to make a comment about something, about a topic that does not appear later in our agenda. I, this is also the time that I usually read the names of the public that I can see. So I will do that now. We have five attendees. Janet Keller, Christine Bresterp, the initials JW, Ken Rosenthal, and Maria Kopicki. All right, Janet Keller has raised her hand. Why don't we bring her over? Hello, Janet. If you can unmute yourself, give us your name and your, remind us of your street address, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, but I want to speak to something that's on the agenda later, so.
Okay, so we'll wait for that to come at a later point in the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Does anyone else in the public want to make a comment at this point? So Janet, good, you lowered your hand. All right. All right, time is 6:37. We will go on to the third item on the agenda. This is our public hearing. SPR 2025-10, Town of Amherst, for 1046 Southeast Street, Munson Memorial Library, continued from June 4th, 2025. Request site plan review approval to construct an accessible walkway and ramp with railings and modifications to the southern entrance porch and other site work, including drainage improvements and landscaping. Under Section 3.334 of the zoning bylaw, in the RN District and also the ARP overlay district, map 20D parcel 49. This is continued from June 4th. Nate, I think you had something to introduce this.
Sure, thanks, everyone. The Building Commissioner, Rob Mora, has requested that this be continued without testimony until July 18th. That way, we can preserve the voting, you know, members of the planning board, and it gives the town time to review this with the Commission for Persons with Disabilities, formerly the DAAC, and just, you know, make sure everyone has reviewed the plans.
So that was a continuation to July 18th?
Sorry, July 16th.
16.
July 16th.
Yes.
All right, so exactly, okay, all right. So we don't want to take any testimony or have any comments from the board on this this evening.
Right.
All we want is a motion to continue and a second, and then a vote.
Correct.
All right, Fred, you got your hand up first. You are muted.
I had a question. I don't know whether it can be offered at this stage or not, and that is, in the meeting materials, I saw two different versions of the walk, one of which was, preserved the bush and provided a curve at the 90-degree turn, and the other one didn't. I'm just wondering which is the one that we are working from.
Nate, are you willing to answer that?
I'll just say that those versions are going to be reviewed by the Commission and others, and then we'll come back to the board with a final one in July, so.
All right, so for the moment, we can not worry about anything in our packet. Jesse?
I was gonna move to continue to July 16th.
All right, we, Pam, should that be a 6:35?
Yes.
All right, so a motion to continue to July 16th at 6:35 PM. Bruce?
I will second.
All right. I'm not gonna ask if there's any more comments. We're gonna go right into the vote. So Bruce?
I.
Fred?
Hi.
Jesse?
Hi.
Johanna?
Hi.
Aaron?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Six in favor, the motion passes. This SPR 2025-10 is continued to July 16th at 6:35. All right, Bruce, I see your hand.
Yes, Doug, I have a procedural question, which now that we've taken the vote, I think I can ask. I guess I'm asking you to, Nate, I saw some public comment that came through by email in the, which asked for this to be reviewed by the disability. And I thought to myself, this is such a small project, and we have fairly comprehensive regulations that include guidelines and everything. And it just seemed to me that this kind of engagement with every available committee can't be good for business. What can the Disability Committee add to what isn't already so clearly outlined in their regulations?
Yeah, I think, you know, members, you know, some of the members are disabled, use an assistive device, or have, say, vision impairment, and so they offer a different perspective. It may be, you know, whether it's, you know, having a different material at a corner, or, you know, whatever, maybe a different, some different lighting. It's really, you know, the design meets code now, right? But sometimes that's, that's the minimum. Is there, are there other ideas or improvements that may be suggested? So it's not, you know, yeah, I mean, you know, this project has a few stops. I think some of it was we were rushing for the grant. And, you know, if we had, you know, done this, if we had, you know, started a month earlier, it would, everything would have been worked out in sequence. So I think it's just kind of the function of getting a late start on this, that it, you know, everything caught up with us, so.
All right, but I mean, the, why then doesn't the Disability Board review every project that we look at?
Well, for some of them, they do, and sometimes the, the planning board could always refer it or ask for their opinion. And so they're included in the transmittals when we have site plan review. So their staff liaison does, does view, you know, does receive something. And so if, if it piques their interest, or they think it might be worthwhile, they have the ability to look at it.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Gee, I was hoping that conversation would go another two minutes so that we could get to 6:45 and.
It's rare that you ask me to continue talking.
Yeah, yeah, Bruce, is there anything, I mean, you know, regarding the policy of how we distribute project information around town, town departments is an interesting topic, don't you all think?
Yes, fascinating. I mean, we are, the, the reason for raising that comment was that Amherst has a reputation, possibly shared with other towns, I'm sure, for taking a lot of developments, development, entrepreneurial time. And this seemed just like an example of something that was a bit, a bit of an overreach. And I thought that if that was the case, and I'm not sure that they share that opinion now anyway, but, but if that was the case, I thought it would be worth asking the question, have I spoken long enough, Doug?
Yes, you have, and Karen has raised her hand, so.
Oh, my goodness.
Also jump, jump into this conversation.
Quickly, I mean, this is the case where the whole grant goes to make this handicap accessible. So in that case, I think it's really appropriate to get the people, the disability group involved. So it's special.
All right.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, like I said, I think it's just it was the timing for this one. I think usually we try to, you know, build it into the process, right? And so it's not really an issue, and I think they have a good, you know, good perspective to add to projects. Yeah, outside, you know, I will say, yeah, no, outside applicants, private entities might say that, but, you know, we, we really try to coordinate with everyone so they understand the process. It's not, you know, I actually think we provide a lot of support, staff does, and the boards do a good job, whether it's, you know, one board or three boards, and so I don't, I think it all benefits a project. It just might be a little bit more of a process than other communities.
And, and it was as, as much public engagement. I think that comment came from some of the nonprofit developers who found that it was taking them forever to get their permits and money is, time is money.
All right, so we are up to 6:45. Thank you all for chiming in there. All right, so now we'll go to the fourth item on our agenda, another public hearing. This is SPR 2025-08 and SPP 2025-01. Applicant is Archipelago Investments LLC. Project is called Gould Way and Lanin Lane. This is continued from May 7th and June 4th of this year. Request site plan review approval under Section 3.325 of the zoning bylaw to construct a new mixed-use development with this, with three buildings, including 140 residential units, approximately 12,000 square feet of commercial space, 180 parking spaces and associated site improvements, and request a special permit under footnote A of Table 3, Article 6 of the zoning bylaw to modify the front setback beyond the maximum required building height. But beyond the maximum required comma, building height to exceed the maximum allowed, and the number of floors to exceed the maximum allowed. This is located in the Village Center Business Zoning District, map 25B, parcels 52 and 58. And again, I'm gonna turn to Nate to start off the conversation of this hearing.
Sure, yeah, thanks, everyone. Kyle from Archipelago Investments has requested a continuance without testimony. The, they're working through the Conservation Commission, so they met last week, they're meeting next week with the Conservation Commission. They plan to meet one more time before July 18th, and so they request a continuance to the 18th, at which time they hope to have a revised site plan, so.
And again, this is actually.
I say the 18th, I meant July 16th, yes.
Right, okay.
Today is the 18th, it's in my head.
Okay. All right, so, okay, I guess we would like a motion to continue to July, July 16th. And why don't we make it 6:40 this time, just so we don't have to spend five minutes talking about other things if the agenda is pretty light? So Johanna, you've got your hand up first.
I move to continue the hearing to July 16th, starting at 6:40 PM.
Thank you, and Jesse?
I will second that.
All right, thank you both. All right, this time we will vote from the opposite end of the alphabet first. So Karen?
I agree.
Johanna?
I.
Jesse?
I.
Fred?
I.
Bruce?
Bye.
I'm an I as well. Six in favor. And the motion passes. All right, thank you all, and if any of the attendees were here, hoping to have a full hearing on either of those topics, I guess you should, you should come back on July 16th. All right, we'll now go to the next item, item five, our general housing discussion. Starting with the Housing Production Plan Review and Possible Planning Board Vote. Nate?
Hey, Doug, I was gonna request that we go out of order. I think the JW in the attendees is John Robleski here for Old Business.
Oh, okay.
So if that's, if that's acceptable.
Yep. So Pam, let's assume that is who's over, who's.
I think so.
That is, and we'll, we'll jump to old business. And so this is regarding SPR 2022-14, Center East LLC, Center East Commons, 446 and 462 Main Street. In accordance with Condition Number 12 of that site plan review approval, review the parking plan, the number of spaces, and whether the two potential parking spaces to the north of the main parking lot are necessary to meet the parking needs of the tenants. Hello, John.
Hello, can you see me now?
We actually can't.
We can hear you, though. Like, if that's, I, I, I mean, I guess if we, if your cameras aren't working, we can always just hear your audio if that's okay for the board.
Well, I can, my camera's working. I'm just not sure on the settings.
All right. So do you, are you working from a laptop that might have its own camera?
I am, yep.
So, okay, if you go to the low, at least in my screen, if you go to the lower left corner, you'll see an audio symbol and a video symbol.
Yeah.
Next to the video, to the right of the video symbol, there's a little arrow.
Yeah, I clicked on that.
And did you select the camera that you want to use?
There was only one camera showing, so.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, well, yeah, my Zoom will do that, too. Sometimes I have to restart my computer to fix it. I don't know if it's a little bug in the system, but.
Yeah.
Or if they did an update.
Yeah, it's been a while since I've been on Zoom, so maybe this needs an update. Well, if you want to proceed this way, it's fine, or you want to wait and reset it?
Well, I think we can, we're, we're fine with continuing with this, without seeing you. Can I just mention before you start, it didn't say it in the intro, but in this, when we did the site plan review for this project, we required John to come back. Was it 18 months later? Something like that. No, John, now we can see. And report to the board how the parking was working, because there was concern about whether there were adequate parking spaces in the plan. So with that, John, what have you found out so far?
Well, it's pretty much like, you know, I stated during the process that we were trying to attract like graduate students, international students, and, and a mix of professionals, and since the first building was done in 2021, that's all come to be. And then we did the second building that was done almost two years ago. So we gotta go and mix there, graduate students. We got a gal that grew up in Amherst and wanted to come back. She's retired. We got, you know, kids going there, well, people that are in their 40s and 50s actually came up from Florida and Texas to go to Amherst College. We got, I think, two units on undergrads, but they're there, you know, to study, haven't had any issues. I've been keeping track of the parking, middle of the night, even when I'm away, I can go on the security camera, see the empty spaces and so forth. Management company has been doing a good job providing, who lives there, do they have a car or not? So I believe right now we have 37 cars listed to the tenants, and that's about what we see on the cameras all the time. So it was really eight or nine empty spots all the time. So we haven't had any issues, and I think I sent some of the video shots from the security system that Pam, maybe you can put up there if somebody asks questions, but different times of the day, I tried to get it, like after spring break, when you know the kids are back. The first week of May, the end of April, when you know they're supposed to be studying. So I think overall, it's been working out pretty well, and we don't see the need, you know, for adding those additional spaces, and would ask that the board waive that for the future.
All right. Let's see if Pam can find the, one of the photos. Yeah, there's the plan.
That's not what we want. I think it's in this email, maybe.
Yeah, they were in an email.
Yeah.
The first one was May 14th, the last one was June 1st, after Nate requested some, like 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM. Yeah, so here, that top photo you can see was the 24th of April at four o'clock in the morning. So there's three empty spaces on that top shot. Then if you go down, you can see the other empty spaces, and again, that's at 4:00 AM. So this, actually, that shot there is adjacent to where the two spaces would be added. So if you're looking at that picture, it would be to the right.
Yeah, so, you know, staff, you know, we thank John for coming back. He, he did it on his own without any reminding. And, you know, we haven't heard any issues with parking around here. So, you know, if, if, you know, for instance, if there was something, you know, I'm sure we would have heard about it by now from the police or residents, neighbors, and we haven't. And I think, you know, the condition states that we come back at a public meeting, and, and if the board thinks we needed the two extra spaces at the end of the parking lot, we could, you know, ask that they be, you know, fully constructed, and if we don't, well, we, you know, we don't, we could have a vote to not to do that, or we could just allow it to remain.
So you're saying we don't necessarily need to take a vote? I mean, by, by appearing before us at the public meeting, hasn't he met the requirements?
Right, and if, you know, I mean, if we wanted to take an affirmative vote to say you don't think it's necessary to put the two extra parking spaces, you know, to pave them, you could, or we determine that the parking currently is sufficient, and he satisfies the condition.
All right, so so does anybody else have any comments, or should I sort of cobble together a motion? Go ahead, Bruce.
Doug, while you're cobbling the motion, I just wanted to ask John, just to, because, you know, this is another data point in terms of the number of units and the amount of parking and so forth. It's closer to the center of town, which is good. John, how many, how many, I, I did get this from the stuff, but I, this happened just as I was joining the board, I think, and so I, I, I don't know much about this project. How many units are we supported by this parking?
There's a total of 49 units in the new buildings and one unit in the old Spanish Studies Building, 446 Main, that is now part of 462 Main.
And.
So 50, 50 units total residential.
And, and you're providing 13, you're, you said that there are 39 cars consistently and nine vacant spots, so that would mean that you've got 46 spaces for those 50 units, is that correct?
There's, that's correct. There's 46 paved parking spaces, and we have 37 listed vehicles. And that's been pretty consistent over the last couple of years, and, and the year prior to that, when only the first building was occupied, it was still at about that same ratio.
All right, good for you, Bruce.
Yes, I think so. Oh, I could ask, is, is this an average of two, two bedrooms per unit?
No, we got a mix of studios, one bedrooms and two bedrooms, and the unit in the existing house on the corner of Gray Street, the old house is a three-bedroom unit.
Okay, so the, the, the average is closer to one than, than two bedrooms?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
All right. Jesse, you had your hand up. I guess you're no longer wanting to speak?
Bruce read my mind.
Okay. All right, so let's see, the motion would be something like, like I move that the board accept the site plan as approved previously, that the board agree that no additional parking spaces are required, and that Mr. Robleski has fulfilled the condition. I think it was, what was it, Condition Number 12 of the site plan review?
Oh.
How's that sound?
Sounded great. Sounded great.
He has experience.
So moved.
So moved. So, um, Bruce, you made the motion?
Yeah, I think so. That was the quickest way to do it.
All right, well, you jumped ahead of Jesse. Jesse, you're all, you're second tonight.
Yep, I was waiting a second anyway. It's all good. Second.
Okay, yeah. All right. Uh, any further comment from the board, or is there any comment from the public? We have three remaining members of the public. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised from the public, so we'll go ahead. And we'll vote on that motion. Uh, this time we'll start with Jesse.
I.
Thank you. Johanna.
Aye.
Karen.
Aye.
Bruce.
Aye.
And Fred.
Aye.
I'm an I as well. The motion is unanimous. Passed. All right, thank you, John.
Thank you very much, members of the board. I know you guys put in a lot of time and probably had a lot of grief now and then, but much appreciated over the years. I think I'm pretty much done developing.
Don't have any new projects in the pipeline?
No, my wife wouldn't be too happy, I guess, but no, I think we're, we're pretty much done and just take care of what we got.
All right, well, good luck.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right, um, Nate, we're gonna, how about if we go back to the general housing discussion?
Sure.
All right, starting with the housing production plan. So the plan was in our packet, uh, we'd seen earlier versions of it. And I think Nate is looking for the board to adopt it if we are so inclined to do so. Did anyone have any comments about what we had in the packet? Anybody have any, uh, objection to us moving ahead to a vote? Jesse?
Um, what I wanna ask, so I had a little trouble. I didn't have a ton of time to look at the latest version, that's on me, but maybe Nate, you have a sense of if there were changes made in response to comments that were submitted, both by us and others? Because I do feel like there were some, some significant things missing.
Yeah, I, I could actually provide a red line version. There were a, a, a lot of changes. So, you know, they added an executive summary, kind of, they reformatted the strategies. And, you know, staff met with them a few times to discuss some of the comments. I think, you know, there were a number of comments about the data points, like how many students live in Amherst and how many off campus live elsewhere and certain things and, um, you know, Tony Marulis, uh, actually provided some more feedback on that. And they updated that, and they added some qualifiers. I just, I think what's really hard is, uh, you, you know, UMass has been, uh, only in the last two years really has been keeping track of some of the data. And then the report uses twenty twenty census information and American Community Survey information, but for the twenty twenty census, it, it's, it's a guesstimate at the number of students. Really, you're supposed to fill it out and, and say where you live most of the year. I think given that, that year, and probably most times actually, families and students aren't, aren't clear on how or where they should put their residency for the students. And so, you know, I know some comments were really digging down into the numbers, and I think we've changed it and we've just qualified it. Because, because it, it's really hard to say for sure what's, what's one or the other. I think what we wanted to emphasize was really what are, what are the needs? And what do they see? And so they changed kind of the range of the housing, the community housing target and kind of su- supported that a little bit better. And so they did incorporate a number of changes, um, kind of, you know, fine tune the language a little bit in some spots. Uh, you know, around the SHI and other things. So, you know, I feel like it's a, you know, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, as a housing production plan, it, the emphasis is on affordable housing. It mentions other strategies. So, you know, some comments were like, oh, why wouldn't it develop more market rate housing or more student housing? And they mentioned it, but they're not gonna spend too much time describing that because their focus is on affordable housing. But I think if you read, you know, if you read it and they say that, you know, these are the influences that affect affordability, I think then the planning board and others in town can say, okay, well, how do we address it, whether or not it's actually an affordable housing strategy? So, you know, my thought would be if this moves forward, you know, in the next few months, the Housing Trust and Planning Board can meet, maybe even the CRC at some point and say, okay, what do we take from this in the next year or two? Like, what are some good strategies we'd wanna work on? Um, you know, just in, see where we could split up the pie and what makes sense. And, you know, for instance, they mentioned, right, densifying housing in different zoning districts. And Doug, you asked last time, and, you know, they don't tell us what number is right or what housing type or style. And so that's something we could look at. So, you know, it could be that we'd say, well, we like the idea of cottage style housing, so multiple units on a property. That's, you know, and, and is it, you know, is there some different component to the design standards there, or age restrictions, or affordability, or something to do with, you know, whatever, ownership? And so, you know, I think those are things to explore. So, yeah, they did. I mean, the, we, like I said, we met a few times, because they really wanted to say, well, do we address every comment or not? So they, you know, we said where we thought they could, you know, qualify some of their numbers or their responses, and they did that.
Do you need a, do you need to vote soon from us, or would you be willing to give us a red line version and, and, uh, you know, we vote on this next time or something?
We could vote on it next time. You know, the, you know, the consultant's contract is nearing the end. Uh, there's not, you know, we're not pressed for time on this. Some communities try to rush to get this in, say to, you know, stead off of forty B or something, but we're fine. Um, after the planning board would vote, this would go to town council as well. And they would look at it, and then if there was a positive vote there, then the town manager would send a cover letter to the state, and then the state would review it to see that it meets the guidelines laid out in housing, you know, in their, in their rules and regs, the state rules and regs. And they would essentially approve the plan to form, that it says everything it needs to. And then if we ever meet any of the production goals, which say is like fifty one affordable units a year, then we get our plan certified. Um, but, you know, I, I, right now, I'd say it would be, it could be approved easily by the state. If it gets certified or not, I don't, you know, I mean, maybe, maybe not, maybe it doesn't, but that's fine, right? I think the idea is just have some framework in place for the next few years.
All right, Jesse?
Thanks. Some follow up questions. Thank you, Nate. That was very helpful. I guess first, what does, what does it mean if it gets certified? What does that mean for the town? And my real comment was, so listen to what you just said, this won't be used as sort of concrete numbers in any way. It's really just identifying issues. That, that, that's really why I was asking, because I feel like some of it is not quite accurate. But if we're not gonna lean on this to say, oh, well, we're trying to meet this goal, or this is actual data we're gonna use to make an argument for some other overlay or whatever, then I'm fine with that. But if it is gonna be used that way, I feel like it maybe needs to be scrutinized.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, I, I would wanna use it to justify things. And, and maybe though, we have to then spend a little bit more time on some of the numbers. Um, if there's a certain, you know, data set, but.
But we could do that. It doesn't have to be in the plan.
It does have to be in the plan, right, right. I think that they, you know, it's like we take the direction from the plan, and if we need to refine it further. Um, yeah, to be certified means you'd protect yourself, your, the community would protect itself from a comprehensive permit. You know, so if you're not over ten percent on the subsidized housing inventory, having a certified plan or working to, toward a certified plan could, you know, allow the town to deny or approve a forty B with conditions. And so it's just another safeguard against a comprehensive permit application. Amherst, you know, already satisfies that. We're at safe harbor with our SHI percentage. And so, you know, I look at this plan, I was really identifying, you know, some really, you know, some, some needs, some barriers and providing strategies, and then it's kind of our local decision on what to do with that.
Okay, thanks. I, I don't feel the need to see a red line version before voting then. Thank you.
Okay. So, board members, are you comfortable with voting on this now, or do you want another two weeks to spend some more time with it? Take it to the beach? Johanna?
Be comfortable voting on it now.
Bruce?
I agree. I, I, um, I haven't, uh, I'm with Jesse that I haven't, uh, I didn't put as much time into the review of this, uh, this version. I put, I put in a bunch of comments and everything, and I guess I haven't made sure that, how those comments have been engaged. But on the other hand, we have, uh, uh, I've been fairly familiar with the plan as it's been going along and so forth. And it seems to be, so I'm co- I, I'm, I'm comfortable. And given that we've got a pretty loaded agenda since we've been, uh, uh, continuing all this stuff, I think it would probably behoove us to take action tonight.
Well, let's see, do we have a meeting at, in early July or not?
It would, it would be July second, but we're not meeting that evening, or we propose not to meet that evening.
Okay, so our next meeting is the sixteenth.
Correct.
And, uh, we have loaded that up, so, okay. All right, well, in that case, um, let's see, Nate, um, you sent me some language and I, let's see, how did it read?
I have it, Doug.
How did it read, Pam?
Can you see it on the screen?
Oh, yeah. All right, motion that the planning board adopt the housing production plan as it constitutes the community's affordable housing plan. So we're, Nate, we're, we're, we're where we are adopting it, but we're not necessarily recommending it to town council.
You could put that in your motion if you wanted to add it to it. This language was taken from the Massachusetts Rules and Regulations Regarding Housing Production Plan, so.
Okay, so the, the legislation would require this language, okay. All right, um, Bruce?
I will do another so moved.
Well, I wasn't, wasn't done cobbling.
Oh. I beg your pardon, I will unmove.
I thought it made sense to, to include them in the motion that, that we recommend the plan to town council for their adoption, I guess is the word.
Yeah, I mean, if we wanted to put that at the end, I think that would make.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
I, I have no objection.
All right, friendly amendment, great. Um, Fred, you still have your hand up. Johanna dropped hers.
Yes, uh, yes, I do. Um, I, I'm having a little trouble with the sentence, the structure. Motion to the planning board adopt the housing production plan and agrees that it or something. I, I'm not, I have a problem with the word as. Uh, do, is that, I, I, I'm taking that what it means is we adopt the housing production plan and we agree that it constitutes. Is that what we're agreeing?
I guess what we could say would be a motion that the planning board adopt the housing production plan from whatever consultant dated whatever date as the community's affordable housing plan. Period.
Okay, I could live with that also.
Okay.
Nate, who are the consultants?
Barrett Consulting Group.
Yeah, I'm just gonna put some language on here.
Yeah, from Barrett Consulting. And does it have a date? I guess I know that it does. It's a draft dated June twenty twenty five.
Yeah. There's actually a Barrett Planning Group, sorry, my.
Barrett Planning Group LLC. Thank you, Fred, for keeping us honest on this text.
The
So, and so let's take out it constitutes.
As the community's affordable housing plan.
And recommend the plan to town council, period. To town coun- yeah, okay.
Or its adoption.
For adoption?
For adoption, sure, for adoption. What's another two words in the universe?
Well, I guess I'll accept that as a friendly amendment, even though it's more like a friendly redraft, but that's fine.
And there's an and before recommend, I believe.
Yeah, you are right. Thank you.
And, and recommends, I think. The board is rec- recommends, yeah.
I'm still good.
Okay, BC one.
All right, I, I, I have to confess, I'm not enthused with recommends. It seems to me the motion is that, because it's a future thing that we adopt it and recommend it in the future. I think they ought to be.
Uh, I'm with you, Doug, so the motion will have the yes deleted. Thank you.
Remove the yes, yeah, okay. Johanna?
Second the motion as drafted.
All right. Anybody, any other comments? Fred?
Yeah, um, just the, the English language here, the board recommends, right? The board is a singular subject. And so recommend should be recommends. Am I missing something?
Well, I guess the question then would be, should adopts be sync, should be then S after adopts? If we're gonna consider it a singular entity.
Uh, I think we should change it to move that the planning board, not motion that, but move that.
That the planning mo- moved, that the planning board adopt and recommend.
Move or moved?
Moved.
Move, it's a mask presence. I think, I mean, I usually say I move the following. And I don't speak in terms of a motion that I might do. I talk about actually making the motion.
All right, everybody, okay, I, Fred, we still don't have, yeah, go ahead, your hand is still up. All right, so Fred dropped his hand. All right, so Bruce and Johanna, you're fine with this as, as done? All right, now let's go ahead and have a, have a roll call. Uh, this time we'll start with you, Fred.
Aye.
And Jesse?
Aye.
Johanna?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye.
Oh, thank you. Bruce?
Aye.
I'm an I as well. Six in favor, the motion passes. All right, thank you all. It's nice to get out our inner grammatical, what is it, a grammar expert every now and then? All right, so we'll continue with the it was a second item under housing, continued discussion regarding the potential overlay or existing apartment complexes in North Amherst. So Bruce, I think you had put together some material that was included in the packet.
Yes, yes, I did. Um, but basically mindful of that, uh, town staff is short, uh, manpower at the moment, and, uh, and that there's a certain piece of work that I thought that I could actually do, because I have the, uh, I have the hard, hardware, I, I have the equipment to do it, this, uh, particular piece of software and so forth. So I offered to do a density, what I, I guess I came to call a density study, which was, uh, um, getting a, 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 helping us as a board get a feeling for what a certain density would look like. And, uh, so I, I prepared that, uh, document, uh, that I forwarded to you, Nate, and I think probably I sent it to um, you too, Doug.
Yeah, and I think Nate distributed it to the board.
Yeah, so everybody sent it.
Today or yesterday.
So, um,
Pam, is that something you could bring up, the diagram that had the, the sort of the building layout on the site with the different colors?
Yeah.
I am looking for my thing.
So I got a few different things that came from.
Yes. I, I was thinking if you put up the map and then I'm trying to find my, my memo that I can have open on another screen.
I think it's comment one and you can zoom in, and then that's the, um, the diagram.
There we go, yep.
Not what you meant, Nate. And anytime if you feel more comfortable controlling, go for it.
Yeah. Well, I, I think that'll be okay, we can see. So. Um, let me see, first of all, I, we, we've got the general overlay that Nate has prepared, which I think we've all agreed, which basically is bounded by Route 116 and North Pleasant Street, but excludes properties along North Pleasant Street, except I think for a couple, but mostly the historic houses are outside. But we've got Townhouse, Brandywine, Puffton, University Apartments, Presidential, those five in a row from north down to south. I chose to do the density study just on the Puffton parcel. Partly because it was easier, it was the biggest parcel, it's about 44 acres. The wetland delineation in that is a little easier to guess because, because the, the, the satellite maps and so forth showed the stream flows pretty clearly, and I could just put a hundred feet out, it's a pretty generous buffer I gave. And also because it's, it's an older parcel and the it's a single owner parcel. Some of the others are single owners as well, but not all. So before I started, then I spoke to John Salvin and also to, well emailed Carl Wilson. I wanted to get a sense of what a good footprint would be to work with. And so the footprint that I worked with, which was a 58 by 220, 226 feet footprint seemed to give a pretty good spread of 10 units from one bedrooms through to four bedrooms. So it's, you know, it's, it's, it's generously capable of, of a footprint that can take 10 units. And so then I, I basically conceived of some three unit blocks from five unit blocks and some seven unit blocks going yellow, blue for the five, and, and, and the western ones in brown are the seven unit ones.
And seven floors?
Seven floors, sorry, seven floors. And I figured that there might be a 50, we would only have half as many units on the first floor if these were mixed use and, and so forth. So I, that, that's a, that's a variable that can be tinkered with. But if, if these were to be apartments, the unit count would be slightly higher because you might have 100% units on the first floor and not 50. So they, they're each losing, each of these blocks is losing five units on the first floor. I thought we needed to show what surface parking could be here. I wasn't imagining that there would be any parking structure. So surface parking is satisfied by surface parking, and I think it's about with 1.4 units, you, you can, you can't really scroll down, I can't remember. But it's a, it's certainly by John Roblowski's data that he's given us a moment ago. It's a generous allocation of parking for the kind of use that we're anticipating. And the buildings are spaced 80 feet apart, which is also pretty generous. So all of this then adds up to, and if you can scroll down just so that I can see the numbers. Yes, I think that we, as we get, so we've got a hundred, so there's, there's, there's just over a thousand units in the combination of seven stories, five stories and three story blocks. And, and I've got 14, 40 parking spaces. And, and I multiplied by a 1.35 circulation factor to convert parking spaces into a system, connect, a road connector system that gets the vehicles out onto North Pleasant Street or wherever. And, and so all of that seemed to give an impervious coverage of 47%. I think the allowable that we added, that we designated for University Drive, Nate, if I recall, is, was 85%, so that's substantially less coverage, impervious coverage. There's probably maybe a little bit more to add and so forth, I'm not sure, I haven't got courtyards and and, and pads for dumpsters and all that sort of thing. So, but still, it's substantially less coverage and the footprint is only seven, the building footprint coverage is only 17%. So this, in terms of maximizing the unit count is perhaps on some respects a little conservative. But it's still, the current units, I think 370 something. So it's it's about three times, 1,030 units is about three times the current density. And it would seem possible, I didn't do other studies, but I could fairly easily, if, if you, if, if, if the board would like me to. We could, I could generate one with a fourfold density increase over the current 376, which I asked Nate, and I'm not, I don't remember if I got an answer, but we, well, I'll just say, we are assuming that the, 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 the current unit count is the, the current maximum developable, the, 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 the maximum development potential for the site. That may or may not be true, but that's what I've been assuming. So that's that's what the density study shows, that it seems to tell me that we can easily and reasonably get a three or fourfold increase in density. If we, this, this that I show here is about 25 units to the acre, I think, if I recall. And reasonable urban scale mid-rise development can double or triple that with certainly without any, any degree of surface parking typically, an urban situation would eliminate that. But if we were to assume one vehicle per unit instead of 1.4, then we could, I think reasonably increase the density if we were to imagine that we might have one or two more than eight units, sorry, eight, seven stories. I have to say, I haven't discussed with any design professionals whether there's a, any, any magic. I mean, the, the, the heights of buildings, certain things change as you go up, the economics with an elevator. It doesn't, it doesn't, you don't really get economic, an economic benefit, you can't afford an elevator unless you go, you know, four stories or so. Various building codes with various construction types limit height of buildings and story heights of buildings. And when you, when you factor all of those constraints in, it may be that eight stories is a better goal than seven. I haven't done that, I haven't asked.
Well, Bruce, I know, I know the code has a, there's a, there's a point at which buildings are considered a high-rise. And I think the, I think the operable number used to be 75 feet. Because at that point, you assume that the fire department cannot reach every floor of the building with their hook and ladder truck. And, and you have to do, I think you have to pressurize the stairwells and do a little bit of, do some other things that I, I actually don't really know what they are. I haven't worked on a high-rise building. Probably some additional things with the fire alarm or some sort of fire control center for the fire department on the first floor, that kind of thing.
Yes, that, that, that's a good summary of what I said I haven't done. In other words, I've asserted three, five and seven. But we probably should make sure that, that there's, there's not some hidden wrinkle or some wrinkle that's not obvious that would make that not a good arbitrary choice for the study. And I'm just telling you that I haven't done that analysis. But that, but.
I wonder, I wonder whether you have enough and parking spaces, just because one per, you know, if, and on average, there's say two or two and a half beds per unit.
Well, that's true, Robowski's was small number of bedrooms, wasn't it?
Given that these are students and they, a lot of them came from out of town. I mean, I, we could rely on the university to provide parking for their cars, but we may, you know, we're not designing it, so we'll see. Jesse, I see you have your hand up. Bruce, is there anything you want to say before we go to?
Only that I was noting that if there is a significant density bonus, that we could decide or we could think about how how, how the town, how we, let's say, exercised a quid pro quo. And whether that would be by trying to have some kind of rent control on some of the units for, for students. Or whether we could perhaps increase the inclusionary zoning from 12 to 15 or 18%. And, and if we pushed the inclusionary zoning up, we would get quite a solid, a couple of hundred or more units of, of affordable housing. And my sense was that you would be, you would have enough of them that you might decide to concentrate that in this yellow band at the front, at the front, at the, up at the North Pleasant Street. And, and then you, that would be a different kind of place, it would be designed differently, maybe even developed differently. But that was a thought, a question that arose as well. There's a few other things, including that pathway to UMass that I, I, I looked at this afternoon, which we could discuss in a moment, I think, but there is a possibility here, I think, of putting a pedestrian and bicycling artery from this, 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 this general overlay through to the campus, it would seem possible. I think I'm done for now.
All right, Jesse?
Thanks. Also, just wanted to thank Bruce, it's really helpful to think about. And I, I guess I wanted one of you who knows way more than I do about these things to, to tell me, educate me a little on parking. So when I look at this layout, I know this isn't like a design layout. But it's still a whole lot of parking lot, right? And really what I'm wondering about is, and it might just be the city kid in me, why is there not ever parking underneath? A building like that, seven story building or five story building, is just not worth the money because it's so cheap to make a parking lot versus the constructed space you're doing? And because, because we're, you know, in theory, in my mind, we're starting from scratch, we can sort of ask for whatever we want here and see what happens. I'm just wondering if that could be part of the consideration or, or like no development ever.
Underground parking or, and structured parking of any sort actually is significantly more expensive than surface parking.
This area. Sorry, if, that includes if you're building from scratch, if you're spreading a brand new seven story building. I mean, clearly that, that would be more expensive space, but is there some other barrier to, it's just money, right?
I think it's, I think it's predominantly money.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'll just jump into, I think, maybe also if there's higher groundwater here.
Yeah.
If you go down, then you have to, you know, manage that within the building. And so another developer in another part of town looked at maybe actually putting parking, you know, I don't want to say totally subterranean, but the high groundwater made it really expensive and they backed off, so they were thinking about putting right like 30, 40 spots under the building. Yeah, I think, yeah, this is great, Bruce, and you know, so I, I sent something out, but I really kind of took this line where the yellow is and said, okay, well, you know, it really depends on how the overlay would be written, but I said, you know, essentially like 300 feet, 400 feet off North Fuzzin, 300 feet off Meadow in that area, it's three stories and behind it is six. So there was no five to seven. When we did U Drive overlay, we kept it under that high-rise threshold because I was told, you know, people didn't want to cross it, right? That 70 feet or 72 feet, whatever it is, they, they would, you know, they would, they would get inches below it, but not, not over it just because of the expense. And so I feel like if we, if we went there, it, we'd have to then expect that they wouldn't, they wouldn't be like, you know, go to the seventh story, they'd want to have, you know, three stories above that because of the cost of everything to justify those expenses. And so I feel like we could verify that, but it might be that like six stories is a threshold. And then when you hit that high-rise construction cost, you know, no one is going to do just seven, right? They probably want to do many more to recoup all those costs, but I don't, I wouldn't know for sure.
Yes, I, I think if it's 75 feet, it would be possible to design seven stories in that, but you might have to whatever.
I think that'd be tight.
All right.
Would be, would be tight.
Two follow-up comments, okay, Doug?
Yes, Jesse.
One on the height is, why are we deciding that? Why don't we let the developers decide that? And two about the parking, coming back to something you said, Doug. Since it is the best proximity to UMass, it's, it's, it's almost closer than some of the housing UMass offers to the center of campus. So I don't feel the need to have a lot of parking here, frankly. I think in the spirit of trying to not have cars, I think it would be fine to not have 1.4 or 1.6, whatever. I, I wouldn't, I don't think that's a barrier. Now, developers might feel differently, but again, why not go for what we think is the best for the town?
Jesse, you've, you've reminded me, or maybe, maybe I just don't know, have we, is this a, an overlay that is for exclusively students or is this for market rate housing with whoever wants to live there?
So I, I mean, I don't know that it's resolved. I think the conversation we had at some committee when you were there, Doug, was that we should not be transparent that the main goal is for dense student housing, but not exclusively. I mean, it's again, I thought landed on, it could be whoever. But that'll probably be the predominant client.
Then. Yeah. I guess if I were the developer and it's not exclusive to students, I might want to have some, at least some parking spaces for other people.
Sure. I'm not saying no parking, but I don't know that we need.
Well, we could set a really low minimum.
Right, and let them decide.
And let them decide what the market, how they should respond, just like the height, we could set a eight-story height and let them decide whether they want to go there.
Correct. I agree.
Yeah, the, I was gonna say that, you know, right now, I, you know, we had said apartments and maybe mixed use buildings would be allowed in the overlay and a new definition for apartments. If, you know, if we say it's student housing, inclusionary zoning may or may not apply. So I, you know, I'd want to be careful on how we, what we say there. And if we're not worried about owner or, you know, occupancy type of occupant, if it's mostly students, then it could just be an apartment building. You know, the question becomes, okay, what if UMass, say, wanted to rent a, a, you know, a building or two here? All of the units, does that, is it still an apartment building or is it, you know, a social dormitory? And it changes that or are we not, you know, we talked about that a little bit, I think, you know, I. And it changes that or are we not, you know, we talked about that a little bit, I think, you know, I, we would want to make sure we clarify that. And then, you know, in Bruce's example, you know, that's a hundred and twenty four affordable units. At a thou-, you know, twelve percent at a thousand, with a, over a little over a thousand units. And so it's a fair number of affordable units. Um, you know, I think that I like, you know, the idea of having them clustered is fine, you know, so we'd have to change that a little bit. Um, I think, I like how Bruce took one property at a time. I think it'd be really hard to say, well, let's do this all at once, even though I, you know, it'd be great to have a master plan for this whole overlay. Um, what we discussed too is, you know, um, what I had mentioned was how, you know, what are the kind of parameters we put on this and what's the flexibility for a developer? You know, do we have, so I took the U Drive overlay uh, and started modifying that a little bit. But you know, how many design standards or open space standards do we have? Um, you know, do we have some open space percentage in terms of number of units or something? I didn't do that, but you know, how do we ensure that there's actually some open space? I, you know, we say that that's the usable open space, but do we have some metric? And, yeah, and I think it'd be okay if we, if we had something about the parking, whether it's a maximum number and a minimum, I don't know. I mean, you'd hate to have the parking be the driver for the site design here if we'd rather have units, but.
Jesse.
I, I think if we did, I'm all for open space requirement. And I think if we put a low minimum parking and uh what we want for open space requirement, that in itself could limit the parking to some degree. And again, let the developers, let the designers come up with something that meets those requirements that they think is viable.
Bruce.
One of the things that I've been thinking about parking uh, uh, and, 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 and UMass. Um, insofar as Jesse and, and, and we've agreed that uh we shouldn't be shy about representing that this could be a, a very good place for a, a substantial amount of student focused housing. Of course, it won't be exclusively that because we've got at least twelve, and I'm hoping that it could be more than that uh of affordable housing that's get generated. So there's a nice cluster of permanent residents in here. But this, i- if it, if it, if it is focused on trying to solve our student housing problem, because uh this is a, close to university and so forth. Um, if, if it's become clear that the university can't in the short term or weren't in the short term, build housing, they might be prepared to build parking areas. Be, even, I mean, some of those parking areas don't even have paving. They're just uh real estate that's dedicated without trees to allow cars. And in fact, a good amount of that is just to the south of here. In fact, that uh a diagram, that, that satellite image that I sent uh, uh, earlier today shows that. Um, so it might be that some of our parking need uh could be negotiated uh um, as um, student, off, offsite student parking provided by the university in uh, more or less on the pathway that, that we hope many of these res- prospective residents would use uh, to uh commute between uh their housing and the uh, and, and the, and the campus. So uh, maybe we could uh satisfactorily uh, have a limited amount of parking here in, for the, for that fraction of the uh housing that is focused on providing student accommodation by uh some agreement with the university. I don't know whether that
And that would be an agreement between the developer and the university?
It, yes, it wouldn't, it would be outside the wording of this overlay, but the town might you know, want to get involved to try and uh open up the, the possibility so that the developer might not feel that they had to make that uh arrangement all by themselves. I think the town would have a little bit more leverage, at least with beginning that conversation than a private developer might have. Although if it was a, it's a bit like a, it's a very minor version of a public private partnership. It's simply focused on parking rather than building the whole um thing.
Uh, Jesse.
Oops, thanks. Um, two thoughts on that. One, just maybe Doug, you know better than I do, just from observing, I don't see all the UMass parking lots completely full all the time. So I'm not even sure. Like there may be space available for people to pay for parking currently. I don't know the reality of that. But mostly I feel like, again, going back to what we said earlier, there's a little cart before the horse. Like, why not let let, let's say what we think is right for the town, for not increasing traffic dramatically, having open spaces, having the density we want and, and see what the developers think, right? Because, because I certainly don't know what, what will work. What wouldn't.
Yeah, I'd be, I'd take, I would be more inclined to take that approach, Jesse. So Nate, um, oh, I'm sorry, Bruce.
Well, I want to make sure that others have had to speak, but I, there is one other point I wanted to add and has to do with the uh the, the local reaction. But I'll wait and make sure that uh
Well, there aren't any other hands up.
Okay. Um, well, as was made uh very clear during the interviews for the uh uh, planning board uh um, appointees for this round. Um, there's an abundance of uh presence on this board from uh, in town, uh, close town, and I'm the sole uh kind of um, North Amist uh presence here. And it seems pretty uh clear that that what we are talking about here with this overlay is is a really good opportunity to solve a housing problem that the town has. But it's not clear that the benefit, it's not clear what benefits are accruing to North Amist here. In fact, the conversation will probably devolve to, how can we minimize the adverse impacts on the local community? While we uh grab hold of what might be a really important opportunity for the town as a whole and to, in a sense, to take the pressure off the um, the, 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 the the established housing and neighborhoods toward the center of town. So that's something that's become abundantly, or is beginning to become abundantly clear to me as I talk to my neighbors. Um, including counselor, um, Kathy Shane. Um, and, and others. I've, I've had a brief conversation with the owner of this parcel as well. And uh, the owner is interested in the uh, the thoughts and discussion that we're having. But they're very, um, it's, 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 it's also clear that the this is a very, the, the present development here is a very well-run uh, and very established uh neighborhood. It has a fair number of students in it already. Um, and so one of the, the things that we're going to have to think about, uh, I think in terms of uh, how we phrase this, how we present this, how we uh, promote this i- idea is, how do we how do we do it in a way that helps the, the north part of town understand that uh A, to, can we persuade them to contribute to a townwide, solving a townwide problem in a way that doesn't necessarily give the immediate neighborhood a lot of advantages? Um, that's uh, I cannot, that's, I, I don't quite know how I'm, how we should approach that just yet. But uh, certainly minimizing the uh traffic impacts would seem to be a, a potentially the, the, one of the, the very large uh uh, issues that will be forthcoming. Um, I mean, there are wetlands considerations, but we've got plenty of room to get back behind them, I think. And there are uh, this, 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 this traffic uh concern that the uh the local community will have, I think, could be uh, very favorably addressed by having a really serious arterial pedestrian and bike way. I mean, two separate uh, um, uh, parallel, nicely landscaped, probably well lit. Um, um, connection. And, and that might uh take some funds that would perhaps be uh contribute to do by the developer in return for the density bonuses that are being uh extracted. But at, at the, at, at the outset, we have a, we have an owner who's very satisfied with what they have and believe that they are doing a very good job and with, with, with cause. Uh, a very good job managing the uh property and they are they are not at all sure of how they might, or how someone might, whether it's them or, or someone they might pass it on to, would be able to manage a, a site with three or four times as many people on it.
All right. Um, Jesse, I see your hand. I just want to let Janet Keller know. I see her hand. And after you go, Jesse, we'll go to Janet.
Great, thank you. Um, totally agree, Bruce. Uh, I think traffic mitigation is probably one of the bigger issues with the, with Amish residents. The other thing I've been thinking about is they're certainly, I mean, your neighborhood, all the neighborhoods surrounding are not immune to the same pressures as the other nearby neighborhoods in terms of the prices of single family houses and the potential for them to flip into rentals, right? So I think that's a winning argument as well. I'm sure you see it. I'm sure they see it. Houses becoming rentals, becoming poorly maintained, et cetera, et cetera. So but yes, I completely agree. That's a really important piece of getting this in place.
All right, thanks, Jesse. Um Pam, why don't we bring over Janet? She's been waiting a while to make her comment.
Hi, Janet.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Janet.
Okay. Let me go back to my notes. Um, so you, as you would expect, I think serious concerns remain about the proposed overlay student housing um zone. Um, and I was thinking of uh, numbers that were in the triple range, um, not uh beyond that. Um, and some of of the owners of, um, and we, we know the owners wanted, uh, they said they would not expand if they didn't have more density. But, um, however, one complex manager recently said publicly that neither property managers nor emergency responders could handle more than um the disturbances they are handing, handling, um, which are numerous and very disturbing, um, let alone three times more. So that's something certainly to consider. The overall proposal as originally stated at three times existing density would overwhelm the housing units in a small congested area. And I do want to say that most days um, traffic in that area is congested. Um, and uh, when uh school is in session, triple, um, tripling the amount of student housing would greatly intensify that uh also would greatly intensify the daily and weakening weekly disturbances that we experience from partering, partying. Um, that um, trigger frequent, frequent calls for police and emergency services. Um, it also would undermine the unique value of the National Register district properties in the proposed areas and the contributing buildings. Some of the buildings go back very far indeed held as um property uh uh, on Montague Road is early seventeen hundreds. These historic properties and adjacent um, contributing properties, together with large protected farm and conservation area, make this a part of uh North Amist, potentially a unique uh historic farming, housing and conservation and recreation district. Um, so, um, I hope you'll think very carefully about this. Thank you. And I see that you're doing a lot of work on it and I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Janet. So Nate, uh, I'm gonna ask you, since you're the closest to the, to Rob Mora. You know, if, if, at what point would uh the police and fire and, and how much influence could they have in terms of whether we're overloading the area with students or something? You know, we, we do our site plan reviews, we do our special permits. Um, and you generally, I think, distribute plans to other departments in, in town. Certainly, we hear from the, the town engineer. But um, you know, if a proposal came in that met the zoning, but police and fire thought it was just way overdone, would, would they be able to have their voice heard in the conversation? And would that be uh, grounds for us to reject a, a project?
Yeah, I think it's a good question. The um, you know, when, when we, when I first proposed the overlay, public works said, wow, if you added that many units, you know, that's across the whole, whole overlay, we'd have to upgrade the sewer main on North Pleasant Street. It's, it's, it's undersized. If they just puffed in where to be redeveloped as Bruce did it, maybe the existing, you know, water and sewer infrastructure could remain. Um, you know, the, the whole site design is really interesting, right? You know, we want open space, but then are you creating gathering spaces for, you know, a lot of people? Um, you know, I, I'm not sure what the right answer is. I think, um, you know, the police had been doing some kind of uh environmental design um, to, you know, reduce uh kind of those, those instances or create safer landscapes. And I think we, you know, I, if, if, if this starts to move forward a little bit more, we can, we can, I think we should pull them in. When I first emailed them about this, they said, wow, that's a lot. And they just said I, we'd have to, you know, right, it could be an issue. They didn't, they didn't say yes or no. They just said that could be a lot of, you know, if we took the whole overlay and said, okay, we're gonna triple the density here and have X number more units. Um, so yeah, I don't, I don't know. I mean, you know, when, when presidential expanded, there was disagreements about having, say, even a half court basketball court, um, and picnic tables. Police said, oh, that's, it could be a, you know, spot where people congregate. Fire said, oh, depending on where it is, it could get in our way getting to a building and people said, well, we'd like it as amenity space. And so I don't know if there's a way to make everyone happy, but I think it's, it's a good, I think it's a good, I, you know, good thing to look into. What's kind of the property management and emergency response capacity given that density? Um, you know, the way Bruce did it, I mean, you know, I can envision two roads going in with, you know, roads going north, south to connect uh through parking or not. And essentially, you've just created like a pretty almost like an urban fabric neighborhood. Uh, that's, you know, from the street is only three stories and it's quite a bit of distance before you get to taller buildings. And to me, it's like, well, that's where, you know, do those become subdivision roads or do we say that they're, they're internal driveways that have to meet standards for, you know, fire access? And so that would have to happen anyways. And is that okay then? So I don't goes back to like, how flexible do we want it or how much do we write in? I in my notes, I'm like, okay, well, right, do we um, you know, have something about police and fire in the zoning, but not well, I don't, I'm not sure what that is exactly, like uh some kind of, some pre meetings or something, but yeah.
And I assume the, the issue with the sewer line, that would be on the developers' nickel to upgrade the line to town standards because they're causing greater demand. Would that not be the case?
Yeah, I think at this scale, we could, we could make that case.
And that line goes south, I assume. Um, all the way to the sewer, are the uh, you know, the, the water treatment plant.
Right, yeah. I forget, at some point it changes over, like the size changes, but right, it, it, you know, going south for a bit, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Jesse.
Thanks. Um, thanks Janet for bringing up those issues. Uh, it's been on my mind also, actually, and I will send to Nate, Pam and Doug, some links to some articles I was reading over the last couple of days. Really have to do with pilot, so payment in lieu of taxes that a lot of universities pay to towns. It made me think a lot about our current town. It made me think a lot about our current town gown arrangement. I'm not going to say too much more right now, but I do feel like if this moves forward with this kind of density, that should definitely be a conversation, probably not for planning board, but in terms of getting more resources to add the needed fire, police services that the, all the students bring to our town. But yes, certainly important considerations.
Okay. So Nate, you had a draft of a bylaw that you sent around this afternoon?
Yeah, I mean, you know, we could go through it. I think, you know, I kind of took Bruce's model or diagram and tried to put it into words. You know, using the U-Drive overlay format, I think from tonight I could keep adding to it. You know, I, we can look at it if we want. If not, you know, I think my major points were, you know, do we really need mixed-use buildings in here? You know, if we, for instance, I think when Bruce, when you're talking about what's the benefit to North Amherst, I was like, well, if we don't have mixed-use buildings here, but we have then have, you know, a lot more residents and we build up where there already is commercial in North Amherst. I think that, maybe that's a way to do it. You know, I had connections, I required, you know, multi-use path throughout the developments and connections to the one on North Pleasant Street. And maybe we have it going to the possible one down this, you know, the Cinder Path Road.
I will say, you know, the parking lot that I use on the rare occasion when I, when I drive to work at UMass is that Cinder Lot that's in the northwest corner of the, of the core campus. And I know that Cinder Road, that, you know, it's, it's not very well-developed at the moment. It certainly could be increased in development. But just from my experience moving around the campus, it's really unlikely that I would use that, that path, that really extremely western path to get to campus on a bicycle or walking or whatever. I would, you know, I think the North Pleasant Street brings you much more centrally to where you want to go if you're going to be on campus. So, you know, I, it's an idea, it's, you know, certainly, but I, I just don't know that it would really be worth the effort, I guess I'm saying. And I'd rather see, you know, increase the sidewalk along North Pleasant Street from, you know, whatever it is, it's probably like six feet. Make it 12 feet or, you know, make it a real, or an institute of a separate bike lane or, you know, do something along North Pleasant Street to make it a more, you know, complete street, to use the phrase. All right, so Bruce and then Jesse.
Doug, I agree, but in looking at that satellite image today, which I did for probably 20 minutes, it is very hard to see how, when you arrive at that corner of the campus, you can get into places where people want to be. And, and I guess I didn't form that conclusion that you just articulated at the time. But what you just said certainly pushed me a long way to thinking that this arterial pedestrian and bikeway idea from this, from that corner of is, is, is challenged. And, and, and it would be, it would be a shame to build something like that and have it not used. And I'm sure we would have studied the thing a little bit before we did that. But I think you're right. I imagine that if we did study this, we'd probably come to that conclusion. So it's, it may be something that we don't rely as much on. I put my hand up because I, I think that the questions that you're asking about mixed use apartments, or maybe it was Nate, there's a few fundamental questions like that. And in this case, I think it's probably something that we should explore with one or two public meetings in, in, in the north end of town. We didn't do that with, with University Drive because we seemed to have a lot of public comment that was very supportive of the idea. And it didn't seem to be as complicated. This seems to be a possibility where we've got, we've got a real prize here. But also, there are consequences. And we don't even understand them fully, and certainly I don't. So I think that, I know Counselor Shane is, I think I know Counselor Shane is interested in hosting one of her District One Neighborhood Counselor Meetings and focusing on this subject. And I think people like the manager of Puffton would be prepared to come and, and, and speak to his experience of managing the project that's there at the moment and what might be the challenge of doing something in the future that was much higher density. So I think we could learn a lot, Nate, for your final drafting. And I think we might be getting close to being, to being able to articulate or draft some key questions that we could explore in one or two public meetings. How do the, how do we feel about that?
Bruce, Jesse, and then Fred, and then I'm going to offer you all a 10-minute, a five-minute break.
Thanks. In reverse order, I totally agree, Bruce. That'd be a great idea to get broader input on all these questions. On the path, I think I largely agree, although if all the density is going to be on the west side, I could imagine as long as it does connect relatively easily to bike back up towards center of campus, it would be used. And it would keep less people on North Pleasant, which I think is a good goal also. The commercial, I don't think we need to require it. I think it should be dealer's choice again. Let the developer decide, like, don't rule it out, but I don't think we need to require it. On your draft proposal.
So on, so that would mean that they, at least some of the buildings would be, or some area would be allowed either apartments or mixed use?
Yes, that's how I would phrase it, sure. On the, on the draft you just put together, Nate, I'm happy to not go through it in detail tonight and send some comments. I've already started making comments, if that's agreeable to everybody. But I feel like we're not quite there for detail thoughts yet, is my feeling, but open to do whatever. Thanks.
Okay, Fred.
Yeah, there's another input or component that I think would ultimately have a major impact in that. And I would expect that PVTA would extend a bus line. And that would go a long way towards making this doable, I would think. I hadn't heard that come up in conversation, and I, I don't want to lose that.
All right. I know there's at least one bus route that goes up North Pleasant Street now.
I was thinking about, you know, if we develop that pathway, roadway to the west.
Okay.
That, that could be very easily a bus path as well.
Yeah, well, I know there's also at least one apartment complex that's out on Route 9. They were required to provide shuttle service to campus as a part of their permits, I think from Amherst. I don't, I think that's in Amherst and not in Hadley. So that's another option. Jesse?
I was just going to say the same thing. We could require, you know, some shuttle service during class times or whatever.
Yeah. All right. Maybe that's enough conversation about this for right now. Sounds like our one July meeting is already pretty well booked. Nate, you know, maybe you could distribute another draft before that, just to show us where you're at. And then we can take this up again, probably mostly in August.
Yeah, I will say there's actually, there'd be a July 16th meeting and then a July 30th meeting. I was.
Oh, there will be a 30th meeting.
Yeah, I think, before we break, you know, my thought would be July 30th would all, would, we could have this and the two, there are two zoning amendments that went to council this week that were referred back to the Plenary Board and CRC. And given the timeframe, I think July 30th is a good time to have those hearings, to open them, knowing that they'll, you know, take a few, few meetings to get through, so.
Okay. All right, why don't we take, so I'll, I'll consider us finished with this topic for tonight. And why don't we, it's 8:10 on my clock. Why don't we take a five-minute break and come back at 8:15?
And maybe we could excuse Karen because it's 2:10.
Yeah, it looks like Karen, we're, we're, we're all waiting for you to fall asleep. So feel free to bow and go to bed if you, if you're ready to do that.
Yeah, I, I think this project is great and I appreciate all the work, so I'm all for it.
All right, good night.
Good night, Karen.
I have 8:16. We've got a couple of people yet to come back. Here's Nate and then Johanna, it's our last.
Bruce, did you pick strawberries?
Versus, versus.
He's muted. They look wonderful.
This is the Simple Gifts weed-infested strawberry patch, which if you go burrowing in the weeds, you find these huge berries. It's really quite exciting.
It looks like we did lose Karen.
Okay.
So you can record that she left at 8:10 or whatever.
Yep. What a trooper she is.
Yeah.
Yep.
What a trooper. So they call the first strawberries on the plant, like the first picking, those big, huge ones, they call them the kingberries. And then the subsequent ones that come after, you know, after each picking before they're all picked out, are, they're not as big. I don't know what they're, those ones are called, but. Yeah.
Prince berries.
Prince berries? Is that for real, Johanna? I like that. I'm going to teach my granddaughter that.
Have you been out already this season to do some picking?
No, I only.
Half over.
Is it though? I only just, just saw the sign at the place where I have been before. Yeah, we've had so much rain. I don't know how it is. How is, how was the picking, Bruce?
Well, I, these are the ones I got on Sunday morning. I did a, I picked a bucket, a couple of buckets full.
So fun.
All right, so Fred is approaching his chair.
Okay.
All right, so we have everyone back. Time is 8:18. And I believe we're up to, the second item under, no, we did the second item under general housing discussion. We did the first item under old business. Now, the second item under old business is topics not reasonably anticipated 48 hours in advance. Do we have any, Pam?
Not me. Mr. Malloy, how about you?
He's shaking his head no, so no old business, no unreasonably anticipated. And then likewise for new business, anything come up lately that's not on the agenda?
Not that I'm aware of. How about you, Nate?
No, I don't think so either.
Okay.
All right.
Yes.
So we're now up to Form A and R subdivision applications.
There are, there are two A and R plans that have been submitted. It was kind of a quick turnaround by staff, just because of the timeframe. To look at these, and if we met next in July, you know, essentially they'd have to be constructively granted. So we're getting them before you tonight. Staff has looked at them, so the town engineer and building commissioner and planning staff has, has looked at both of them. And if we start at the first one is 1535 Southeast Street. It's taking, you know, one property and dividing it into two frontage lots.
Can you see it?
Yes, we can.
Okay, let's see. Show a small, active speaker video. There we go. Okay, let's see, show a small acting speaker video, there we go.
And the, uh, it, you know, it meets the zoning requirements, the town engineer's comment. We're not, you know, we didn't feel it was necessary to put on the plans is that. This area of the street, this is quite far down on Southeast Street, they have, they would need a sewer ejector pump if they were to develop this. Uh, and then it's a forest main, um, a pump line, sewer line, so, you know, to me, that's, you know. Something that would, you know, we could have the assessor put on the note cards, but it's not, you know, for zoning purposes, it's not. Necessary.
It doesn't require review under the subdivision file.
Right, right. Right, so, you know, there's lot one and lot two, right now it's just one big lot and they're separating them into two lots.
All right, so I think what the usual thing we ask in this, for, for ANRs, um, is. Does anybody on the board object to my signing the. I think it's the, uh, this plan actually in the upper left corner. Um, that in fact, a, approval of this is not required under the subdivision control law. And if nobody has an objection to that, then I'll stop by Town Hall or make a, make a. Some other arrangement with Pam to make that signature. So, does anybody object? This is, speak now or hold your tongue, okay. All right, so that's the first one, Pam, do you want to show us the second one?
Sure.
Yeah, the second one is Barry Roberts' project on University Drive, four twenty-two Amity Street. It's now five University Drive will be the address, so. We knew this was coming, uh, you know, there's a few properties that they're combining to one, into one. And so, I actually believe this is a condition of the permit, that they do this, that they combine all properties and that's what they plan to do.
So, the two sort of vertical dashed lines indicate the current property line?
Right, yeah.
Which is being erased.
Right, and there's actually one between the two buildings, which is hard to see.
Here.
It separates the parking areas, that's also being eliminated.
Oh, so there's actually four parcels.
Right, four parcels down to one.
Okay.
And. You know, there's the proposed roundabout is, you know, starting construction soon in this corner. And there could be a change to the property, uh, with a bus stop, but this isn't showing that and they would come back and modify it. And some of those details have yet to be worked out, so this is really, you know. Just a, just combining the properties and if there's anything else that needs to happen, the, it'll come back in the future.
Okay. All right, any objection to this? No, I don't think so, so. Pam will make a date.
Okay, it will be, um.
Sorry, so this is ju, this is not the site plan or anything like that, this is just the combining of the lots, great.
Right.
Yeah, and, and Nate, you had said, I think you'd mentioned that Barry was gonna be coming back to us for that project.
Yeah, that could be, um.
From five stories to six stories or something?
Yeah, so, you know, the overlay is effective, uh, it's, it's, it's in place, and so. Tom actually, uh, on Barry's behalf submitted an application to modify the existing site plan review. And we're actually trying to get that on, um, the July sixteenth meeting, uh, to open the hearing. Um, you know, I don't know if Tom's optimistic that, you know, it would take one evening, I think it would be, could be more than that. Um, yeah, so they essentially left the site plan the same and inserted a floor. Every, you know, mo, most things remain the same, I think, yeah, there are some considerations for the board though, but that's, that, that'll be coming soon.
Okay. All right, so that's the two ANRs. Time is eight twenty-five. Any upcoming ZBA applications we might be interested in?
I have not received any transmittals, have you, Nate?
Excuse me, I think the, uh, you know, um, Colonial Village has, has been discussing expanding for a while. And they're, they're starting the wetland permitting, and the idea would be to then add quite a few number of units using the same building design and footprint. And I think that would be a, a special permit through the zoning board. And then, uh, up on, um, Route one sixteen where Annie's Garden used to be. Uh, just south of Bo's Barbecue, a few, few properties. The ZBA had approved a battery storage facility, uh, with pretty high sound walls and everything in the. For whatever reason, the, the applicant is coming back to the ZBA to reduce it, reduce it in size, I actually think that the. Kind of the energy density of the batteries has increased, that they can get the same amount of kilowatts in a much smaller kind of battery storage facility, so. That'll come back to the ZBA as well, I think those are the kind of two upcoming things that I'm aware of.
Okay, Bruce?
Um, question Nate, the, uh, the, the portion of Colonial or Colonial Village. That in some way, uh, is connected with the, the other overlay. Uh, area that we, uh, have, have been thinking about in terms of increasing density and so forth. Um, is what might be considered by the zoning board, uh. Something that we would want to kind of affect the, because I'm thinking of the, I think North Village where. Basically, the university came and rebuilt largely this density that was already there. And now we're talking about an overlay that would allow them to, you know, double or triple that. And it would be nice not to get behind the, the, the play on, on another overlay area if that's what we're thinking.
Yeah, the owners are, you know, they're not, they're not, um, tearing down or demolishing any buildings, adding to it. But I do think that they could have increased density, they're just, you know, um, we applied for a mass works grant, knowing this was coming. And we had the conversations with them about, you know. Greatly increasing the density and they, they themselves weren't, they weren't interested in it, given the complexity of financing and. Uh, you know, phasing and tenancy and everything and possible relocation. I still think it's worthwhile, even if they move forward with this, to have something there, and East Amherst, you know, that's something staff's looking at and we've talked about as another priority. Because, you know, another developer could come and partner with them and change it, so. Uh, but, you know, they, I think they would be adding ninety-nine units, so it's, you know, it's still a good number, I think that there still could be more added. With a different kind of site plan.
And, and this is Beacon Properties, is that right?
No, this is, uh, Colonial Village and Presidential are owned by the same owner company, it's Alan Kohn or.
Okay.
He's the owner, I don't know what the actual name of the company is, but.
All right. So Bruce, are you thinking you would like to see the Colonial Village proposal? You're muted.
You know, so. I think, I think if we were able to, uh. Make the case that this is an area that we're thinking of and maybe be party to. Helping them think a little bit more expansionary if, if what Nate says is they're not currently. Uh, one, persuasion is one of the, one of the things we're in business, um, to be doing, so. To that extent, I would say yes, but, um, with this, with, with, with this crowd up, uh. I don't want to, I, I don't want it as much that I want to sit beyond ten o'clock, if you understand, uh, i- i- is this gonna fall?
Yeah, so the, they haven't actually applied to the zoning board yet, is my understanding, they're trying to get through Conservation Commission first, but they, you know, have been working on plans. You know, knowing what they would do next, so it could be that. In a July meeting or early August meeting, we could ask the owners or applicant to come before the board. You know, whether, you know, depending on how far they are in the ZBA or, you know, they might not even have.
Yeah, so we could make this decision in one of the July meetings, right?
Right.
Okay.
Are they gonna be coming to us as a site plan review anyway?
Um, I, I'm not sure, I was thinking it would be, uh, just a special permit.
Okay, from us or just from the ZPA?
From the zoning board.
So it would never get to us?
Right.
Cause everything they're doing is as of right?
Well, so, you know, the.
Except for the zoning variance or whatever.
Right, it's like, you know, I, um. The way the apartment complexes were built and then the way the zoning changed and what happened, you know, they, it could be like a nine point two two, so they. Go through a special permit process to modify something that was there.
Okay, Bruce?
Given our expressed interest, uh, to ourselves at least, in, uh, this part of town is another in the limited area of. Uh, overlays that we may be interested in or concentrations, Bokai and so forth. I think we really should, you know, I'm firming in my view that we should, uh, expect to have them, ask them to come before us. Because if, if, if we are saying that this is an area of town that we're interested in, we would be borderline derelict by not, if we didn't ask them to come.
So Nate, see what you can do. All right, uh, I guess that's it for ZBA applications, um, upcoming SPP, SPR, SUB applications.
Well, I mentioned five University Drive South, but you know, was four twenty-two Amity, so that, that's, you know, really forthcoming. Um, you know, and if it'll be the first product that uses the overlay, it is amending a previous site plan. Uh, when that comes forward, there are considerations by the board using the overlay, so. You know, I think they, they designed it initially knowing that there was this possible zoning change, so all the setbacks and certain things are met, but. It'll be something the board can look at. There's, uh, uh, Bruno's Pizza, you know, has. You know, the owners have been deciding what to do with that space and whether they convert it to. A s, a smaller commercial space with a unit in the back or two or something, but that's some, you know, they're. They have, uh, they've gone through the local historic district, they have some contractor permitting. And at some point, they'd probably, depending on what they do, would have some permits, whether that's to the ZBA or Planning Board in the next month or two as well.
I'm sorry, I don't know where's, where Bruno's is.
That's, uh, the corner of, the intersection where Triangle runs into, um, to Main right near Dickinson, so it's.
Oh. Okay, across the street there, yeah, okay.
And, uh, yeah, I don't, I, there isn't, I don't have anything else that's really imminent.
All right, committee and liaison reports, Bruce, anything from PVPC?
Uh, yes, uh, there was a meeting last, um, Thursday. And, uh, you know, a, a new executive committee was appointed and, and, uh. And Walter Dunn was not replaced by his town, so this chap who'd been chair for, I don't know. A gazillion years, was replaced by Bill Dwyer who's, um, in Hadley, so, um. Um, a- as typically the, these meetings, they have presentations, that's a lot of the way the, the, the. Planning Commission meetings run, uh, um, and this presentation was by a crowd, two guys from, uh, an organization called. Insure, that's I-N-N, um, S-U-R-E. And I have to say, I found this, um, uh, uh, concept that they were discussing, uh, a little hard to grasp. Um, but what they were talking about was, um, insurability planning. And assessing what they call total costs of risks, and this particularly to towns, and I, um. I was, um, thinking about, well, some towns are. Uh, I, I think it's, in this part of the world, it's probably mostly flooding that seems to be the concern, so so, some of the. Towns in the, in the, in the region are probably more concerned about this than others, and I wasn't sure whether Amist. Uh, had a need to deal with what's called insurability planning and assessing total costs of risks, it seems to be a. Um, uh, uh, an adjunct to or, or a, a, a yin and yang of, uh, economic development planning. But it's a new term and it's, uh, it's climate related, it's climate driven, uh, the risks from, uh, of, uh. Of, of natural, what we call acts of God, I think was my mother's term for this, uh, related to climate change. Um, I have the presentation, I could send it, I could make it available, um. Uh, but, uh, maybe all you need to know is there's this thing called, uh. Insurability planning, how, to, to what extent, uh, we are able to be insured or are insured. Against, um. Uh, all the things that FEMA deals with. Um, that's about it.
All right. Um, you know, I guess during the drought last year. I looked at the big trees in my backyard differently. Uh, as a threat rather than, uh, shade. Um, and made me wonder whether I ought to have a bigger fire break between my combustible. Yard and my house, so I think wildfires are also something we could worry about. Um, do folks want to see the presentat, Bruce is the, were the slides that you could share. Pretty self-explanatory or was it?
Not really.
Had to be there.
Well, even when you were there, as I said, if you were cursed with a brain like mine, it, it wasn't overwhelmingly, uh. Uh, I, I felt like I needed to have a cup of tea with this guy.
Be encouraged to Google the term insurability.
I think that's a better way of going about it. Yes, these, these fellows had had a, apparently a very successful meeting with the executive of PPPC. And it was very, a very interactive discussion, and the guy brought his slide deck. Um, expecting maybe that he would have an engage, a similarly engaged conversation, but that doesn't happen with this, uh. Very large board, as I've said, or commissioners, I've said that half the people or two thirds of the people have their. Have their, have their, um, uh, video closed, so you can't see who they are, you just see a name. So it's not a group that's highly engaged. So I would, uh, I would endorse your suggestion, Doug, register that there is a term, there is a thing. It's driven by climate and perturbations and, uh, I'm not sure whether this town is as, uh. Driven to want to know more about it, um, as others, but, uh, as I say, I don't know a lot.
All right, Jesse, anything on Housing Subcommittee you want to say?
Only that I've been remiss, I need to schedule some meetings, um, hopefully before Landing Board again, so we can help Nate with the overlay. That's all.
Okay. And Karen has left for the night, so we won't hear from her. I really don't have anything, uh, I guess, I can ask Nate. When will we hear from CRC about appointment of new members, um, or returning members? Bruce, I can at least thank you for your service the last three years. Um, I don't, and Karen is the other person whose term is ending, I, I actually don't know whether she was. She applied to be reappointed, Bruce?
I can fill you in a little, because I was there and I was, as one of the interviewing, and the way these are done is, is, as you, we all know. Because we've been through it and it's been stayed this way for a while, all of the interview, all of the candidates are interviewed together with the same. Uh, list of questions and then cycling of answers, and, and of course, you can stick around, uh, and I did, um. The recommendation that the CRC will make to, uh, the council. Will be, um, to appoint myself and, um, Jera, um, Smith. Uh, another candidate, Angus, um. I can't remember his name, Karen, and then a fifth candidate, um, the fifth candidate whose. Uh, name I can't remember, was, uh, was not so well prepared and, and, and wasn't, uh, supported by any of the. The five CRC person, but, um, it came down to a tie vote between Karen and Angus. Um, some folks felt that, uh, a bird in the hand is a good idea. And there are a few counts, a few of the CRC that were looking for a bird in the bush. And so, they have left the, the decision between Angus and Karen. To, uh, the, uh, council. But if the CRC follows, if the council follows CRC recommendations, then Jera and I will be appointed in, um. End of, end of June.
Okay, so it's likely the two of you and then either Karen or Angus.
Yes, and, and Angus is a good, Angus is a, is a, is I think a very good candidate, uh, I would support. And Angus is a good Angus is a is a, as I think, a very good candidate. I would support. If I were on the CRC, I would support Karen because I think. She's given good service and and she adds a kind of bandwidth to the way we think. And. But, you know, if if the council decides for Angus, it won't be. We shouldn't be troubled too much. I mean, I I will be personally troubled because I like having Karen around, but. I'll get used to Angus as well.
Good. All right, so that. That was report from Chair. Nate, Pam, anything from staff?
No, you know, I always mention the Dodson project is still ongoing, so we hope to have something. Public soon. The staff is still working on the open space and recreation plan. Also, two staff members, Aaron and Walker, are really trying to get that wrapped up. And that'll hopefully come to the board soon for review, similar to the housing production plan. The state allows it to be up to a ten year plan, and so we're working on that. Previously, the open space plan, it was like three years, five years, maybe seven with an extension, but they do allow up to ten now, so. We were pretty far along and I think they're reframing it as a ten year plan, which is. Is great because it takes a lot of effort to do them. So if we can get approved as a ten year plan that, you know, that allows a town to apply for funding. From various grants and programs, and then it also is a nice outline for, you know, conservation and recreation projects, so. That might be coming in the, you know, in the next two months.
All right. Anything else from anyone? All right, time is eight forty two. I guess we are adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So we will next meet. Shall I?
Sixteen.
Sixteen. Thanks, everyone.
All right, good night.
Doug, I'm out of the office tomorrow, so we can and Friday. So we will have to think about next week to get together to do the ANRs.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep.
Maybe. Have a good night.
Good night.